Okay, councillors, please sit. Welcome councillors, members of the executive, members of the public joining us here in the council chambers, and members of the public joining us at the airlines train. Swan Hill Rural City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pays its respects to their elders in past and present. councillor King, please.
We recede law that we made grant wisdom, understanding and sincerity of purpose for the decisions we are called on to make for the welfare of the people of the rural city of Swan Hill.
Thank you, please proceed. Apologies and leaves of absence. Mr Mayor, we have an apology from council Benham. So aware of the circumstances, yes, council Benham has taken a tumble off her motorbike and is in hospital, in a base hospital at this very current time. We wish her a probably very best in her speedy recovery. Directors and officers, please.
Um, sure, so.
May I accept the apology, Mr Mayor, and second it?
Yes.
Councillor Jeffrey, all those in favour? Master unanimously. Directors and officers, president, please.
Yes, all directors are present. Director Les, he had carried agreeing with the lines, um, so they'll be reported minutes.
Thank you. Um, confirmation of minutes, can I have a move that the minutes of the scheduled meeting of the council held on 6th of February 2021 be confirmed, please?
Mr Mayor, can I advise the chamber that that's an automatic thing, the system does? You report the meeting on the 16th, just postpone it a week to the 23rd? Sorry, so it should read, uh, the 23rd of February.
Can we have a move to that effect, please? Yes, councillor Fee, seconded by councillor King, all those in favour? Master unanimously. Uh, disclosures of conflict of interest, do we have any conflicts of interest or any items before us to add? We have none. Joint letters and...
Should I mention it in regards to the events in four months that my sister was mine there? What things involved?
Yes, you should, and you will need to leave the room at that point in time. Thank you councillor King. Joint letters and readings of petitions.
Um, no, Mr Mayor.
Public question time. We have, uh, three questions here submitted by Dr Jackie Kelly from the SAVES Swan Hill Serenity Action Group. Question one.
Um, can I move at least...
Spend... Thank you councillor Fee, seconded by councillor Jeffrey, all those in favour? Thank you. Okay, two. Please explain to Swan Hill community what arrangement, if any, our council has with the recent airport users? Rex Regional Express Airlines Ballarat Training Academy and IWA International Aviation Alliance Mildura Pilot Training School?
Yeah, I'll take that question, Mr Mayor. Um, council does have a written agreement with, uh, Rex Regional Express, or it may be a parent or subsidiary company, but it is effectively Rex who, uh, do training based out of Ballarat. Um, this agreement's been in place for, I think, around five years, uh, and it involves, um, Regional Express bringing their training academy to Swan Hill for somewhere between one and three weeks a year when Ballarat is fogged in. Um, they haven't turned up every year, but I'm aware that they were here last winter for a brief period of time and they've certainly been here at least one, if not more, winters before that. Um, so there is, um, it's basically a cooperation agreement. My recollection is there's no fees attached, they said, to use our airport when, when, when Ballarat's fogged in. And they tend to come for one week periods of the time, move all of their staff and trainees up here, take accommodation, do their training in our good weather and then go back to Ballarat. Uh, in terms of IAA International Aviation Alliance, uh, there is no arrangement in place between this council and that organisation or any of their subsidiaries, cousin companies or arrangements.
Thank you. Question two. Does council acknowledge that it can greatly mitigate the impact of circuit training noise on residents by seeking an entry into the ERSAs in Route Supplum Australia for Swan Hill and Rombo aerodromes to advise that visiting aircraft are not to conduct circuit training at any time? Noting that council has recommended such an entry be made into, in the ERSA for Mildura Airport per recommendation six of the Mildura supplementary airspace review descended 2019 entry. As such, an amendment would prevent visiting aircraft doing circuit training. When will council adopt a formal position and resolve to place an ERSA entry?
Yeah, like once again, Mr Mayor, I'll take that question and thank you, I acknowledge the question, uh, and also acknowledge, uh, Jackie Kelly who's in the, in the gallery today. Uh, look, I won't make any comments on what Mildura does or does not do or their airport, um, but I am certainly and my staff are aware that, um, one of the means of controlling use of the, uh, aerodrome is to make sure that any rules are published in Ursa, so that pilots are aware of, uh, the rules around the airport that they are considering or travelling to. Um, in actual fact, this subject matter is the subject of a, um, notice of motion put forward in the agenda today by councillor King, and so, um, I would invite the, um, the questioner, Ms Kelly, to, um, have a look at how that debate goes. I, I can't predict what council might decide in respect of councillor King's notice of motion, which will be dealt with later today, but we'll, um, we'll probably, not probably, but we'll, um, put council's position a lot more clearly.
Thank you. And question three. We know councillors preparing a report on airport fees and charges. How does council intend to inform, consult the community before a report goes back to council? We ask that SAVES Swan Hill Serenity Action Group be considered a stakeholder and included in the consultation process.
Yeah, sure, thank you. Well, once again, I'll take that, Mr Mayor. Um, council has completed part of its consultation, that has been a, um, a meeting with the airport users, so those who are likely to be paying, or those who are local and likely to be paying these fees or who are regular users. Uh, and I will note that there was, uh, at least one individual present at that meeting who's also, uh, connected in some way with the SAVES Swan Hill Serenity Group. Uh, so clearly SAVES Swan Hill Serenity Group are taking an active interest in this matter. Um, we were formulating a summary of what we've heard from those who will be required to pay the fee and we'll be bringing that to council, uh, for discussion, uh, and then it would be my intention that we would, uh, advise the community of what we're hearing from the user groups and what councils thought it's like on the matter.
Okay, Mr Clinton, any more questions?
No, there are no more questions.
Can I, uh, have a move that we resume standing orders, please? Thank you councillor Jeffrey, and seconded by councillor King, all those in favour? Master unanimously. Open forum. We have any members wishing to present to open forum?
None have asked in advance, Mr Mayor, no.
Section B reports. Item B 2112, airplace construction tender. Mr Emple, please.
Thank you, uh, Mr Emple. Um, this report is to determine the tender process council wishes to offer in appointing a head contractor to deliver the airplace project. Councillors will recall that we had, uh, discussed with council over the last few years the closed tender option which would, uh, which would limit the number of tenderers. Um, and so there are three options outlined in this, um, sorry, I'll take a step back and we did go through an expression of interest process to engage a contractor to advise and work with our architect during the design phase to try and value management, value manage the project, that is to minimise costs. Um, things have changed, um, since the time we did that expression of interest, which is, um, about a year ago. Um, and this report recommends that we go to an open tender to allow for, uh, other contractors to participate and put in a, a tender, uh, tender that will comply with our requirements, um, and not stay with a closed tender option. So the recommendation is that council take advantage of current market conditions, which have changed in the last year, in commercial construction and progress to an open tender in accordance with standard council tendering procedures for the development of our place or she been minus drive or something.
Questions, councillors? Um, councillor...
I'd like to move that we, um, move as per the recommendation.
Do you want to second that? Councillor King?
I have a question.
Yes, can I ask questions any time? Yeah.
Um, the, the, um, the design is not totally completed on the objects, one of you, yeah, is that correct?
Um, the design is complete, the details, we've seen, probably got another week or two to go.
Oh, so...
Probably by the end of the month, we should have that.
So what sort of timeframes are we, um, considering as far as when this tender would go out? After that detailed design?
Um, hopefully going after tender before the end of the financial year. Um, so sort of May, June or earlier with a view to start commencing for this tender. So as soon as we rea-, as soon as we're ready, we will go after tender.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Laura? Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded. Do you wish to spread to the motion councillor Young?
Um, yes, I believe that the, um, as per the recommendations, a demonstration of, um, continuing support of the council to move the airplace project to the next stage and towards completion. We're coming out of COVID-19 crisis and I believe we need only positive and forward-thinking actions and activities that will increase economic development, cultural and creative spirit and demonstrate to the whole community that we are prepared to do what is required. The project will increase visitor numbers by putting us in a more competitive position, um, in relation to other facilities around the state. So we encourage visitors to come and be a positive member of the Swan Hill community.
Yes, yes, I know. Councillor King?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, um, just in support of councillor Young's motion. I think open tender, uh, is the best way to go for this project and that's the best value option, um, best value for money for the council. And also I ask for a detailed assessment of contractors through a normally proper council process, uh, as we go through the, through the tender process. So I fully support this motion, we, um, uh, fully support the recommendation that the tendering process is a, is a full open tender.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion? Any speakers against the motion?
Um, I, I, thank you. Um, I have expressed, or expressed as always, will I have concerns, um, regarding the longevity and wisdom of this project in its entirety purely, mostly on business and planning grounds in that it is going to be built on a site that is constrained for the future growth of the artillery by space. However, it has been the council's decision to proceed, uh, and so it will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers against the motion? If being known, do you wish to close the vote councillor Young?
Uh, I think we've said everything we need to say.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll proceed to revoke. All those in favour of the motion? Those against? Passed, thank you. Item B 21.13, piney settlement minus drive car parking design. Mr Emple, please.
Thanks, uh, yeah. Um, this report is outlining the design for the minus drive car parking upgrade and to support the airplace development. Um, currently, most of the car parking in minus drive is not mine marked and therefore it's inefficient in terms of its usage. Uh, this design allows for listed on page nine for record seventy-four standard vehicle parks, three DDA compliant park, eight standard short-term vehicle parks, two bus parks, eight caravan long vehicle parks, two caravan long vehicle short-term park, and then, and in addition, there's the third and existing car parks, um, in the vicinity of the PS Gem and Spoons. That leaves a total of a hundred and ten car parks. That doesn't include the greater car parking in the vicinity of Spoons and the objects, which, um, holds a minimum power supply. Um, the design of this is under sort of under iterations, um, and consultation with Big Track to enable, um, the Big Track land on the western side of minus drive to be used for parking. Um, that has all been sorted, um, and this design balances the need for some landscaping and the introduction of new trees, um, and, uh, an upgrade of the footpath along the piney settlement side of the road as well, uh, and improves that, um, that, uh, undesirable area up near the end of piney settlement as you come down the hill, it improves that as well. Um, so council, uh, the copies of the plans are in this report and we seek the endorsement from council on the parking design.
Okay, questions, councillors? Yes, councillor King?
Uh, just question B. This has endorsed the timing of construction of the, um, minus drive for changes uh, in, in relation to timing of construction of, of our place.
So we're hoping that we'll be able to do, this has been part of the tender documentation, but the western side of minus drive, all we commit to our place.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then the eastern side, when heavy vehicles are finished going over the river channel. So it'll be done in, most likely be done in two stages depending on what the contractor suggests in terms of time.
Thank you.
Councillor McPhee?
Um, Mr Mayor, was there any consideration given to a pedestrian crossing at this time? They're likely to have a lot of parking on the western side of the minus drive and going across the road, which is quite a wide road. Um, what are you doing about pedestrian movement?
It, it, we did and we originally had a pedestrian crossing in there, but it does take up a lot of car parking. Um, we felt by narrowing the road, so it'll actually, when I say narrowing the road, the actual lane will be narrowed because as you say, it's quite a wide road. Um, that will slow the vehicles down. Thoughts too of reducing the speed limit as you go through that section? Really, we really want it to be a car park, not a road. So, um, we feel that there'll be opportunities, there'll be, um, pram crossings and things like that, so an angle people cross, but without a distinct pedestrian crossing.
And the initial plan to the car park was, as you're using the last bridge, what happened to that and how many car parks are we losing or not doing that?
Well, we haven't lost any because it's still ankle parking, it was all going to be ankle parking there anyway. Um, uh, it's more the negotiations with Big Track, um, going that far into the track land.
And just one last question, Mr Mayor. The design for the car parks is having access basically from the southern end. We're getting a new bridge, what, how will it carry for vehicles coming the other way?
So it's two car with both and there's things like the long vehicle parkings on both sides and we go to cater, cater for caravans, if things coming in either direction. Um, so, um, we, the design...
But all, all part of monkey is you've got angle parking on the western side. Yeah, that way, but you've got no angle parking for vehicles coming from the north, so they, it would be difficult for them to get in the angle parking.
So we know from traffic cams that most people come from Rose Street, not all agree. Um, and certainly from the caravan park, well, most of them walk, but if they're driving, they're driving that way, so hence the long vehicle parking on that side.
And the whole design, there's one last question. The whole design of it, of what, um, with the new bridge likely to be put in place sooner than later, I'm hoping, um, that's going to obviously affect traffic flow anyway. So what considerations given to that, given to that, in this whole process? Is there any traffic counts and traffic flow?
Yeah.
That's all with a restricted access on either end?
It could maybe, um, we certainly have had initial discussions with, um, um, Big Roads about the need to maintain access from minus drive onto the Calum Street. Um, that, that will, it's likely that it'll be in a different location, but there's certainly a need to maintain that or a whole, just access to the riverfront to get this developed, uh, and need that access to continue. So we stress that very strongly. And we're at this stage incorporating that into the, the design part area.
Mr Mayor, can I perhaps just state what the screen said? It's been, may have sort of abundantly clear by council offices to Big Roads that access to minus drive must be maintained both ends, um, to cut off access permanently from the north end would cause significant disruption, difficulty in accessing a riverfront, a caravan park, piney settlement and, and so on. So whilst there may be some temporary disruption whilst the bridge is being constructed in the long term, it's absolutely intended that the same amount of access to minus drive as currently exists will, will remain.
And, sorry, Mr Mayor, I've got another question. In relation to spoons, um, like some of the car parking is, yeah, so it's good, you go in the nail, you can't use, get in the nail because of that and there is four spoons. So, um, how is that going to improve or provide better parking for spoons to go around this or, so on?
How would...
Well, how, how are we going to have parking, enough parking? Because you're always going to...
It's shared, it's shared, shared parking. And we're hoping that we will be able to do some work on that spoon, uh, the greater power to, uh, line mark that and, um, once we get the tendency, we know whether we can manage that as well.
Yes, councillor King?
Um, thank you, Mayor. More, um, on page thirteen, there's a, um, ledge over the river. Um, has that been part now for public consultation or viewing of the layout or? Or on a new edition, it's not part of this actual project?
All of that's right.
Yes.
Um, the master plan for the river talks about a forward wall in this location. Um, so this indicates that forward wall, but it also indicates the possibility of this, um, cantilever viewing platform as well. Um, that hasn't been now commented, um, but it was done just, just, just to make sure we could fit things in, in terms of car parking.
Sure.
So it would need to, um, yeah, so it's not, not actually all of that.
Yes.
It's not, um, not planned to proceed at this stage.
Thank you.
Any further questions, councillors? Any further questions, have a move, please?
I'd like to move to the motion as per the recommendation.
Do you want to second that? Councillor King, do you wish to go to the motion councillor Young?
Um, I just believe that this is a great area on to the, uh, through this motion. And so those same sentiments, uh, uh, attach to this one as per previous. And I think this is a great design, it's going to increase the number of places that we can have and also support the increased numbers of users.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Young, councillor King?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, again, just supporting councillor Young in the, in the motion and the, um, the design's been through the process, um, several iterations have been done. This is a good design and this will support the, uh, the overall development of that proceeding.
Thank you councillor King. Any further speakers for the motion?
Oh, spoken well, Mr Mayor. Yeah, frankly, it is a, a good concept, um, and I've had a lot of questions during, during, during the consultation, I ran through and car parking, I don't know, vehicles, but as well as caravan and fastens, so it affects the area as well, as we get to recent to the area. Um, and something the council will continue to work with, which is another question that came out, called, uh, you're not going to drive straight at Tom's, so it's a second back door, which will also aid something to target.
Okay. Any further speakers for the motion? Any against the motion?
For, for, always, always, um, designs are very, it will be a great addition that piney settlement has had a huge amount of cars there in recent months and, uh, be very positive.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion? Any against the motion, do they amend or give them a vote? All those in favour? Master unanimously. Ask unanimously. One to lead, twenty-one point one four. Our place pre-construction site preparation works. Miss Green, please.
They've reported our our place development for this agenda. We're getting things organised for going out to tender and so there's a lot of pre-construction site works that need to be undertaken. And I guess the most important, not the most important, but the ones that we'd be most interested in is the tree removal. Both sites are specific trees as well as trees along Monash Drive. Council has had an arborist carry out a report on all the trees that either need to be removed or will be impacted by the development. And unfortunately, those planted trees along Monash Drive that were planted in the sixties and seventies have been deemed unsafe by the arborist, sorry, not all, but twenty of them and will have to be removed. Underground services will have to be relocated, transformer upgraded, rotunda removed and of course, the locomotive and the big wheel relocation within the settlement. This report is just to outline that those things will be undertaken prior to construction. Any readiness for the construction of the new building? And we will be communicating those. In fact, we have a newsletter ready to, for nearby residents and then to help to everyone to join in interest in our place as well. So the recommendations are that council endorse the site readiness actions, as we said there on page seventeen, and that the above actions be communicated to the community and the nearby residents in accordance with communications plan.
Thank you, Miss Green. Any questions, folks? Yes, councillor McPhee. As I said before, Mr Corinna Young, the tree being removed is an opportunity to use that wood somewhere around the facility or outside you serve it?
We're hoping, we'll certainly be using it in the outdoor landscape area around our place. We're hoping that there'll be some of the timber that will be suitable to use for bench tops within the building. That's subject to staying on the timber's line when it's removed. And then Monash Settlement will use any remaining timber as well as part of working and those sorts of things as well.
Okay, any further questions? Councillor King?
Heritage Victoria has been undertaking an assessment of the Monash Settlement. Does council have any idea of the end date for the report or acceptance of the nomination?
No, we have the heritage officer on the side. He's on the twenty-sixth of February, one, two weeks ago. And no indication was given of the time. So the heritage officer does prepare a report with a recommendation to their bosses and then they decide whether to take it to the heritage council for a decision. A bit like here, whether it comes to the heritage council for a decision. I suspect it will be months, but.
Yes, we got it, we got it. I understand.
Further questions, councillors? Yes?
I'd like to move the motion as per the recommendations.
Yes, just again, councillor McPhee? Do you have to speak to the motion, councillor Young?
I just think going on from our first two efforts that we've had, the motions that we've had, that this is just a continuation of the similar sorts of issues as the drive, we should move ahead and get the projects going. Also, just to say about the trees, we're having fallen trees right on the riverwalk, so, and they've all been planted back at the same time. So I think really, the removal of those trees is not going to be very much an issue.
Thank you, councillor Young. Councillor King? Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, the removal of trees at any time is an issue, I believe, but as long as we use that timber in the facility around the building, it just shows that we're using, not cutting and trimming down what we're doing. It's important that we do use that. I think it's appropriate. This is important, like our place has been decided democratically to be building the settlement. But I think we've got to, and part of that brewing the point is the air place in the settlement was to keep it within budget. If we procrastinate and don't get this done anywhere, the longer we leave, the more cost of life that we get up and the more chance that we may have to reduce to actually build this out. So we've got to get the work done as soon as possible so we get the best bang for our buck. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McPhee.
Any further, read this for the motion? Any against the motion?
I remain concerned that there is some possibility, we don't know how remote or not, that if the area is listed, that we may start works and incur a cost to our community that may not be able to be recouped. And I think there would be value in making inquiries to Heritage Victoria about when their report is to be written and timeframes and then commencing the works after that. So that is my perspective on it. Heritage Victoria do not accept nominations unless they have some thought that there is a chance they will be listed. They have very strict criteria because of course they receive countless nominations, not frivolous to the people doing the nominating, but they need to have real grounds for investigating. They put money and resources into investigating because they believe there's a reason. The Monash Settlement was the very first of folk museums in Australia and signified a change in tourism and contemplation of art and culture that has transformed Australia's recreational and intellectual activity. And for that reason, I think that we would be circumspect to make inquiries to Heritage Victoria about the exact timeframes before we put a spade in the ground. Thank you.
The speaker's against the motion? Do you wish to close?
No, I can give you the consent.
Yes, we'll give a vote. All those in favour? Those against?
I have conflict of interest to my head.
Let's go on round two. Miss Green, please.
I'll start, I was going to jump in.
If I may. Yeah, thank you.
Council does an annual call for grants for events and we did that last year during COVID and of course, we didn't come nowhere close to using the budget because of obviously the reluctance to stick funding for events at that time. So we've done a second round of that, January, February, and certainly got eleven applications for funding. The subcommittee, which included two councillors and officers, went through those applications and there's a list in there on page eighteen of the recommended events to have funding. And that is the recommendation of this report that council approves the successful event support funding grants as listed on page eighteen.
Okay, questions, councillors? Yes, councillor McPhee? The two that were taken place next financial year, twenty-two, were not backed for that reason. If we had so much money leftovers, like fifty-one thousand, why weren't they given consideration of actually spending that money so they could pre-plan?
I might answer that by moments to me. Good thing I was part of the assessment panel, Miss Green was not. They were looked at by the panel and generally provided with a favorable response. That indication is being sent back to each of those organizations, but they will be required to compete against whatever other proffered applications come in for that second tranche of monies. So that was the decision of the committee. A couple of them are coming up pretty soon and so we thought it prudent to give them an indication that their applications would fail or be considered.
Just one question then. Any leftover money from this year, does it come into next year's grant route?
No, that's a matter for the new budget next year.
Further questions, councillors?
President of the Senate. You know, some events are quite not serious and low resources, some are through the tax system, but they've overparted this one actually.
Being one?
Who's that?
So we have agreed, because they're going here in October, we had agreed that we would hold those funds. Took there. So there's a couple of them. There's another one.
There are a couple of them.
Yeah, I can't remember what the other one is.
There's a bunch of other questions from councillor McPhee. They'll still have the funding in order to do their best.
Yes, that's right.
If you applied and were granted funds and indicated that you couldn't proceed but will proceed later, those funds have been quarantined. But councillor McPhee's question was about unallocated funds. Unallocated funds will go back into consolidated revenue.
Any further questions, councillors?
Perhaps for clarity, Mr Mayor, the committee, councillor McKay indicated the conflict of interest while she was sitting on the committee as well and so excused herself from assessing one of the applications of which her sister is a party to. And so to make sure that the scoring was consistent across all applications, there were five on the committee for all assessments except for one application. So councillor McKay excused herself when the scores on that application were bolstered by twenty percent so they were comparable because there were only four people assessing those. So they were comparable with the others.
Thank you, Mr King. Any further questions?
Oh, maybe that's where I can ask.
The second, yes, councillor McPhee? Do you have to speak to the motion?
Yeah, just to open with Mr Mayor. Maybe there are tough times at the moment for actually groups to plan and get grants, get their events underway and give them a lot of free lots of the financial debt. So they continue a hard act around current restrictions and compliance with the part who observes what's going on. Events are asked, so it's good to say that we have to get it out and before some.
Councillor King? Look, it's important that council support these public events. They are good community events within our municipality. I am a little disappointed that they did put two off for next year's there in mind that extra money left over. We could have another fifteen applicants that all get successful next year just because two groups were preparing themselves a lot earlier. I guess disappointing we did knock them back, but that's the planning panel's opinion, so we've got to stand by that. But I think some consideration should be given to that in due years if this occurs again. Like we've got to look at that to make sure this money is left instead, put it back into the community, not wall it over to make sure we put back in the financial resources. Thanks, Mr McPhee. Any further speakers for the motion? Any against the motion? Do they know? Go for it, all those in favour? Ask unanimously. Thank you, good. Councillor McPhee, your session, please. Okay, the event support fund round two has been passed. There's further recommendations?
Thank you, Mayor.
Now, your next three items I'm proposing we do in hot, that is the community garden policy, occupational health and safety council policy and full control policy and procedure. Councillors, okay, if we go through, yes, we are. Okay, and so we have, Miss Green, please.
You want me to?
Yes, please.
Um.
You know all those, okay.
The local reports are there, the property teachers block.
Mr Mayor, in our policy, in our procedural matters, I think all councillors had written, they've been through assembly and they've been discussed a great length. Unless there's any questions on whether to move it, they all be adopted as well. That's the question, any motions? Okay, fair to move it. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Speaker's motion? I look on number zero one, it's number one. We are determined to update our policies, especially with the new law of government act that always are coming on with the new law of government act. We need to review policies every step to make sure that they are competent to end up with that. And that's what's taking with this process. Mr King, come in. Councillor King?
I agree.
Further speakers for the motion? Any against the motion? There's none, all those in favour? Ask unanimously. One to lead, twenty-one point one nine. Community engagement guidelines. Page forty-three. Mr Lexi Fox?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Local Government Act twenty-twenty requires council to help communicate with policy by March twenty-twenty-one. Supporting guidelines were developed in consultation with council staff. Documents were developed in order to provide timely guidance on the forthcoming community engagement on the community vision, council plan and financial plan as prescribed by the act. The guidelines build on the parent organization's community assessment practice and that had developed in line with requirements of the act which specifies engagement principles and deliberative engagement processes. And then as the use of the policy to inform community engagement on other strategic documents. The community engagement guidelines contained within the report to replace the public participation procedure and involving communities in council decision-making processes because this document will supersede the requirement for those. It has been, the guidelines have been developed to assist staff to plan to lead a community engagement in accordance with the community engagement policies which were adopted at the February council meeting. The staff and council have been engaged on this process to ensure that we have accomplished everything that we've required. It's, promising guidelines are to communicate effectively with a variety of different people and commitment to community engagement through the local government act. So we recommend that the council adopt the community engagement outlined as part of that and revoke the public participation procedure and involving communities in council decision-making processes.
Questions, councillors? Yes, councillor King? There were guidelines. Why is the new local government using the guidelines? Guidelines policy or something else is inhale strict the work of the board?
Well, I mean, it's the local government, it's the changes that they put in. These are guidelines, there's no one hard and fast way that community engagement can be conducted. But this is a guideline to probably ensure that we look at things in the correct manner and take us to the path so that we can achieve effective engagement with our communities. There is no one hard and fast way to do that. It's quite a guideline that points towards the best practice of the team.
Yes, councillor? And anyone who knows that will be reviewed?
I would expect this would probably go through at the same time the policy gets reviewed in the future. This will just become an attachment under the policy at point in time.
Further questions? Then I have further. Thank you, councillor McPhee. Further recommendations? Thank you, councillor McPhee. The speaker's up, councillor Jeff Group. Do you want to speak to the motion? Just to speak to the motion, councillor McPhee. You know, community engagement is always something that's very difficult to do at times. Community engagement is about council reaching out to a community, but also the community reaching out to council or participating in a productive manner as well. We've got to get this right. It's, as Mr Lexi said, it's an ever-evolving area and we've got to be adaptable to that. The way we communicate in the future, things are going to change and as progress, the communication is going to be different. We've got to make sure that we do do this properly, work hard at it and continually improve. And I'm pleased to say that if we do look at new ways of doing it, they can be incorporated into the engagement guidelines in the future if we find a people a better way of doing things. So I think this is important, but if we do engage with the community in a productive manner. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Jeff?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Guide to council, I suppose, is where the big right of way that where the council are looking to engage with their community. As I would, it's disappointing that no one has very good providing submissions to the community engagement. But I think that really highlights that people will provide their feedback or it's something that they're passionate about. Sometimes it's about letting people know that a service they use and they might use a lot of impact is going to change and then get it, they're going to go through that. So I think that's the trick, what we call to be implemented and see how it rolls out.
Okay, councillor Jeff, is there further speakers for the motion? Yes, councillor?
This is very, very important policy and although it has some great aspirations, it is, does fall upon the councillors, who are the representatives of the community, and upon us to ensure that we're listening to the community and also that we're taking notice of their feedback. I'm very taken with the reasons that it says here where community must consult, the council must consult, when a decision or plan will substantially impact the community and there is some part of the decision or plan that is negotiable. Community members have expressed an interest or could be interested in a plan Community members have expressed an interest or could be interested in a plan and community input can enhance decision-making, project outcomes or future opportunities. We have so many positives in our community. We're a lovely size where we actually can, um, guide the way our community develops and listen to our community. We're neither too small nor too big and I think this, um, guideline is very, very important for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers for the motion? Any against the motion?
Just one thing I'd like to add, Mr Mayor, in motion, of the community engagement, I believe councillors, honour councillors, they've done its best over the years and continue to try to do its best. These guidelines brought in with the new Local Government Act, this is about the local government's role across Victoria. I don't think this was aimed specifically at a lot of country communities which do do a good job in relation to our community engagement. And maybe look at our bigger brothers and sisters in and around the metro area who need a little bit of help in that area. But I think we do a great job as is and as has to the best of everybody and we can only improve on it.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, councillor McKay. Uh, may I go for it? How's the photo? Asked unanimously. I have the B21 point two zero, Australian Local Government Association Conference, Mr McKay.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. First things first, councillors, in your papers, you've almost got the right report.
I can't find that.
Council had a discussion, uh, some months ago as to whether or not the Australian Local Government Conference would proceed and we still don't know, but, uh, ALGA has their own saying that it most likely will in some form or another. Uh, and four councillors at that time expressed a preliminary interest in attending. Uh, it has been the custom of this council to send two councillors, uh, on most occasions to that conference. Uh, and so we did have a subsequent conversation. Uh, but the report that I've put in the papers actually still suggests the four councillors, so I apologise for the confusion. Um, suggesting, uh, having discussed this matter with all councillors, that councillor Moore, our mayor, and councillor McKay, uh, and myself attend that conference, uh, to represent the Swan Hill Rural City Council. Uh, and the recommendation should read thus as well.
Thank you. Any questions, councillors? Yes, councillor.
Of the councillor Benham and councillor Young, have they, uh, they have expressed interest or they have not attended the queue? Or is it, do we need to?
It was discussed approximately three weeks ago and councillor Young had been and said, oh, well, come out.
Okay, yeah. Uh, was it sort of like that?
We've thought, we've been before, so, yeah, it's good to see someone else stands and be on the car, haven't we?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Um, just interesting, two councillors stood aside because they've been before, which is quite interesting. And grateful because I think it's, we've got to look at how we spend our money. Um, in the past, the question was, yeah, more than likely, um, the CEO's normally go, when we have the opportunity to meet with, um, ministers or assistants, are we, have we got any meetings with them this time?
No, nothing's been planned at this point in time. But a little bit, a little bit early for doing that. Now's about the time we would decide if we're going to try and do that. Uh, I'm flagging that's going to be difficult in the COVID environment, but the years that unfolds is a bit of a mystery to us all as to what access we'll have to ministers or their aides in Canada.
Um, and bearing in mind now, we're looking at trying to be the ministers or Mr Mayor. Certainly, we're just going, certainly, what minister are you going to go look at, look at aid and?
Um, giving ministers for help, uh, minister for water, for two. We need the agriculture a little bit. And the cost, yeah, they'll be at least, they'll be safe. Minister level, yeah, for sure. And, uh, but there's no country we'll give you to say. Well, we might have plans and we'll see what councillor, thank you. Further questions, councillors? May I ask that I remove it, please?
Oh, really, that's better recommendation put forward about, uh, by councillor, uh, by Senator McPhee.
For clarity, Mr Mayor, removing councillor, uh, it just councillor McKay and councillor Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. And second, councillor King, do you speak to the motion?
Uh, it's always been a good opportunity over the last few years for, uh, mayor and councillors to attend and, uh, go with ministers and as well as fellow councillors from across Australia and discuss the progress and opportunities that are happening. So I hope for two to attend with the same one, if it goes ahead this year.
Thank you, councillor King.
Nothing further, then.
Any further speakers for the motion?
I just wanted to say, I've been twice now, uh, once as a mayor and one at the time when another councillor and I went out down without Mr McPhee. Um, I just think it's a great experience for councillors, especially you councillors that haven't been in that environment before. We met so many people, we did so much networking and being in those meetings with the ministers is really interesting and educational. So I recommend to all councillors that at some stage they get on to that trip.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion?
I'm a bit against the motion, Mr Mayor. Look, I'm not against councillors' companies, I've been to this on numerous occasions myself. As councillor Young said, it is a great opportunity, not only in the councillors' Victoria, but right across Australia. My councillors right across Australia and you can talk with them. It's a great benefit to councillors and I encourage all councillors to go if they get the opportunity and if they wish to go. My only concern this year is with the, um, the chief executive in the office of government, um, bearing in mind, especially with COVID delays at the moment. Um, we had just advertised recently that it's, um, we're going to extend, or we're going to talk about maybe on extending the CEO's contract for a further two years. The fact that we've got a lot of issues going on in the new Local Government Act currently and new changes, I think it's more appropriate for our CEO to be back here at the helm. I know councillors, or councillors in the past, I'll name Frankston as one of them, sent nine councillors and no CEO, which I think is ridiculous. Send a couple of councillors by one, the CEO doesn't have to go. Not whether this stage, I don't believe the CEO needs to go. It's towards the end of his time with the new Local Government Act, issues with the airways going on, the airport issues going on, a lot of, um, different projects going on at the moment. I think it's more important for our CEO to be at the helm, clear act in Swan Hill and let the two councillors go on their own and they can enjoy that benefit of many other councillors which they get the more benefit from. And Mr CEO's been here many times to talk, he knows what's at the top. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Any further speakers?
Can I speak for the motion even though? Um, apologies, um, Mayor, councillor McPhee, that I would like to speak in favour of the CEO going. I think his experience with, uh, meeting with MPs and ministers would be very beneficial. And also the previous networks he has with other councils, so I think it's, there's value in it and it's a short amount of time away from council.
Thank you. You can, uh, councillor Tippett, do you speak to the person?
Yes, I, I'll take my, councillor McPhee's comments. Uh, the motion here is to authorise the CEO to attend, it doesn't compel him to attend. So the only, only opportunity is the paper of ministers or the higher level discussing whether the CEO would be advantageous or there are higher business requirements based on Hill. It does compel him to go, I don't know, to authorise it, if we can go ahead after the circumstances we're under. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, closing debate, okay, we'll go to the vote, who has in favour? Against? Carry. Section C, decisions which need action and clarification, signed seal report, see twenty one point three, Mr McKay.
This report details the use of the council seal in the last month, Mr Mayor. Uh, five, uh, five documents the seal has been attached to, they are section one seven three agreements or, um, these are variation of leases which a number have been coming through as we've altered the, um, the, um, public liability insurance requirements on a number of our leases. Any last, any questions if there are, councillors?
No questions? Can I remove it, please?
I'm emptying it.
Yes, move councillor McKay, seconded. Councillor Jeffrey, do you speak to the motion? Mr McKay, you're up. Go to the vote, who has in favour? Asked unanimously. I have the B21 point four, council assemblies, regular attendance and agenda rights.
Again, Mr Mayor, for noting, uh, a little short of an usual, but in the, um, three week period between council meetings. The recommendation there is the council note, the contents of the report.
Questions, councillors?
Mr Mayor, just the first assembly, I was in Northern Poland, on the twenty third.
I was on the other motion, Mr Mayor, you don't remember? Yes, that amendment, seconded, please. Councillor Jeffrey, who has in favour? Thank you, carried. Uh, section D, notice of motion, see either B twenty one point six, people curfews. Councillor King?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Move that, uh, council be provided with a report outlining number one, options for implementing a night time curfew at the Swan Hill and Robben Vale aerodromes to limit circuit training activities. And number two, the implications of implementing such curfew with respect to the operation of the aerodromes, general aviation and the regional economies.
Councillor King?
I'd like to suggest an amendment, do I do that?
No, wait, we need a second to read the motion, please.
Last question, please.
Mm-hmm.
The, by specifically implementing a night time curfew, councillor King, are you considering the impact of daylight savings of when nighttime actually is?
I would expect that the report would outline anomalies to do with daylight saving and, uh, what, what's defined by night time.
But, theoretically, or.
Pardon?
Time for hours. But I've heard of.
Yeah, I, I would expect that the report would outline those sort of options, that's why, that's why I've asked for options, um, rather than specifying times. I think if, once we've got a report and we move to, potentially move to a, to another level, um, then those details can be, can be discussed, uh, when we get to the next level.
Yes.
One question, Mr Mayor. Um, what sort of costs evolve in this report, Mr CEO? Would you have an idea what's evolved in that and do we have the capacity to provide that information to the House?
Mr Mayor, through you, this work will be done in-house, uh, and so the cost will be officer time. It's, uh, it's a few days of research and report writing for officers. Do you want it in dollar terms?
No, that's, that's.
I can't give that to you. I would expect that we would need to go outside the organisation.
You're in mind of setting that before, Mr Mayor, okay.
Second, councillor, second councillor McPhee?
I have a question. Uh, is the city council actually able to do this, like, bear responsibility to put a curfew on? Or is it some other coordination?
So, Mr Mayor, the notice of motion is that council be provided with a report outlining, well, that, this, this motion does not implement the curfew. It looks at all of the logistics, legal framework and so forth. But, uh, my preliminary advice is, yes, council operates this aerodrome, we manage it, um, along with, as long, there'll be some requirements through CASA, Civil Aviation Safety Authority. Um, but I'd be reasonably confident we do have the power to do this within reason.
Thank you.
I'd like to suggest.
Motion has been moved and seconded.
I'd like to suggest an amendment.
Yes.
It's me suggesting the amendment.
Oh, yes, the motion has been moved and seconded.
I've seen them too. Sharon, did you get the email? No. Would you prefer to take it from the email and I'll read it out? I think it went to you. Um, I'd like to insert after number one, number two, that, so that we, the report also outlines options for submitting an ERSA entry to prevent circuit training by visiting aircraft at Swan Hill and Robben Vale Airport to limit circuit training. Uh, did you, can you find it? Number three, options for managing Swan Hill and Robben Vale aerodrome utilizing an airport conditions of use and access document. And four, that Swan Hill Rural City commits to full public consultation in regard to adopting policy affecting airport function.
You lost number two. So the initial motion had one and two, didn't it?
Yeah, that'll have to go up to, maybe at the bottom.
So two becomes five.
I think you've actually deleted two, Sharon.
You deleted two at initial.
It might be right down the bottom, actually. It's up the top, I.
Yeah, but it's not in it, councillors.
Do you see it's in the box? Stuart's number two becomes our number five, because I've inserted them in the middle. I think that's correct.
Last councillor McKay to verify.
Number one's not completely obsolete, I mean, I think it's one of them, Robben Vale.
Aerodrome to limit circuit training.
Yeah. The original number two, Sharon, is not included in the callsign. So the original number two, that's the end of number two, Milan. Because you see, one of two studies and then the first that goes after that.
Number five, which was number two.
Yeah, put that back in as number two.
Well, can I clarify with the mover of the amendment, please? Um, your words were pretty specific that after number one, I'd like to insert.
I just thought that, um, Stuart's number two, original number two related to, would relate to any proposed changes.
So you're like, that remains number five?
I do. I think it, we want to know the implications in regard to general aviation, the regional economy, the aerodrome, for any proposed management that might be considered and, and remembering it's a consideration. Yes.
Happy with that? Okay, do I have a second? You do not have a second? Um, the amendment lapses, we are now back to the original motion. Which is a move and seconded, uh, councillor King?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, I've been observing the debate within the community around the use of the Swan Hill aerodrome, allowed to that, the Robben Vale aerodrome as well, uh, for many months now, having listened to concerns raised by community members. Uh, I don't believe any rational minds are calling for a cessation of the residual use of the aerodrome. However, what I am hearing is that people are having their lives impacted by the high intensity circuit training being conducted at Swan Hill aerodrome, particularly late at night. I think that we all want to see our aerodrome used for the benefit of our, our community, both residents, commercial and industrial interests alike. Increased use of the aerodrome can improve the quality of life of our residents and make Swan Hill more connected regionally and statewide. The concerns that are being raised are the impact of circuit training is having on people's ability to enjoy their lifestyle. Um, circuit training is high intensity and is invasive from a noise perspective. I doubt that those who are currently using the Swan Hill aerodrome and Robben Vale aerodrome for circuit training are actually bringing any meaningful or economic benefit to this community, but are detracting from the serenity of, of the lifestyles of those communities. So this reason, I think, council should explore the options available to it to curtail invasive circuit training, uh, particularly overnight, which would, you know, we'll get more information on what, what that entails, uh, whilst ensuring that we do not in any way curtail the use of the aerodrome for those who seek to use it for legitimate recreational or commercial purposes. Bear in mind that as a council, uh, we are currently considering options for the implementation of usage charges for the aerodromes. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you speak to the motion, councillor?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Um, yeah, look, this obviously has become an issue, it's all born about by the, um, flying school, that's the biggest issue, the flying school in relation to this. I'm not going to motion up end of last year in relation to providing costs at the airport, there's a free charge at the moment. It is a public aerodrome that we do have. It's like our public roads, we can't stop anyone driving on our roads. It's exactly the same sort of infrastructure, although unfortunately with the training school, it does create a lot of, um, anxiety for those people that live nearby. Um, I think just these motions alone sort of cover what councillor McKay was looking at doing, um, in relation to her amended motion. If we don't apply costs and even the costs alone, we can make the cost more, a great deal higher up of a night time, it's going to be a chance of a curfew to a point. So I'll see on the pitch whether we actually need a curfew, because unfortunately, but this is only asking for a report, so I'm happy to go with the report. We've got to get it right because we have a lot of people that use this aerodrome that may need to use it after hours, such as the air ambulance, postal services, people like this that provide services to our community. If we have just a blanket curfew. If we have just a blanket curfew, that means I'm a lander. And that's totally inappropriate, I believe. We've got to look at this in a strategic manner. I think it's, we've got to get to a point near councils where if we keep asking individual reports about the airport, we're not going to have any answers at all. Let's find out whether these two are going to go. If they come into existence, the U R S A will be updated then. Because if we put in costs and we put in a curfew, those things must go into U R S A to tell people or the pilots are flying these planes before they leave their, before they leave and they're coming to a destination swivel, what they're going to be chat, what they're going to be meet with there as far as curfew and costs go. They will hopefully put in the U R S A, once the decision is made, one way or the other. And we've just passed a community consultation guidelines. So we've got to communicate with the public, I believe, and more so about these sort of issues, we've got to do it properly. I think we're working through this process, unfortunately it's going to take a little bit of time. But it's, can't be done overnight and the fact that it's going to be done in-house, I have concerns that we keep putting out reports, getting a consultant to do these reports, comes at a great cost to the community, not only the community around there, but also it takes the council staff, if it's a long and protracted report, as I've advised, takes them away from our other functions in our council plan. We've got a new council plan just about to be made with this new counselling board and the community will have a say in that. That's the time, I think we've got to stick back and look at strategically where we go with the airport into the future, rather than just like the approach we're taking at the moment. We need to look at it properly and the whole process, how our records manage into the future. It's a great asset, we've got to, we can't have our, we've got to have connectivity to other areas. We've got to use our airport, we're using it in the best possible way for the serenity of swivel, but also for the economic value and economic benefit of the community of Swan Hill as well. So I think those two reports will last for at this stage, will cover a lot of the issues with been, the community have asked about these U R S A reports or these U R S A thing has been spoken about. I think this is the way to go. Let's get those reports in, find out what's happening and we'll ensure that the staff get back to us in the in a very timely manner with these. I believe that a lot of the cost report has been done already, getting close to being presented to an assembly. So with only a couple of days' work, maybe this curfew could come in and be signed on. Let's resolve this issue completely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor P?
Any further speakers for the motion? Yes, councillor.
I'd like to speak for motion, and it brings to the attention of councillors that this actually says to limit circuit training activities, not all the other things that have been mentioned. So I think it gives us the opportunity to actually restrict that report to the circuit training activities and not the essential things that we do need. And that will boost economic activity.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Jeffrey?
Spoke for the motion, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We know that both the aerodromes and Robben Vale and Swan Hill are, are public aerodromes and they have been used quite especially for, for use in my age. And the time of recently, particularly with the negotiations and stuff were banned undertaken for to establish a flight school with the archer way was undertaken and then didn't come to any fruition. But we have seen an increase in usage by particularly flight schools that as the community have let us know that are probably not really respectful to the time, time limits that we have as a community. Not seeing aircraft flying over our tenor ships during the night, past twelve a.m. In particular time, so I'm quite comfortable and I'd like to see implementation of the user fees that we have underway and also to assess what we tend to in relation to putting in night time curfews at the airport, at both airports. And what impact that will have on our businesses and our locals that currently use the aerodrome. And some of the other schools, as was raised in question time today, that have been using it for over five years and use it a couple of weeks a year, that haven't been overly owned or something. So I think we have two positions here that we're looking to take and I'd like to see how they are implemented before we commit to further work that may or may not have the impact that we know that our community wants.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Can you speak as against the motion?
I want to speak for.
Yeah, for the motion.
I support councillor King in this motion, it's great to see councillors taking initiative and driving some agenda. It's welcome, it's welcome to have them be responsive to the community. However, and it's very good that we will be looking at curfews and the implications of them. However, we could achieve more by looking at a more comprehensive management of the airport and that is what those amendments were seeking to do, to prevent time wastage and make it nuanced and the controls that one can potentially, or the management can potentially be, it has several levers. And if one looks at other airports, I think we could achieve our community consultation and have a management plan more effectively than as councillor McPhee said, a scattergun approach where we're going for costs in one report and then curfews in another report. A more comprehensive approach would be, I think, more effective, however, I do welcome councillors engaging in this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McKay. Do we know further? Speakers can use to close.
I just want to remind councillors that the purpose of the motion is to get the report so that we get the information on our options for implementing to curfews, to limit circuit training activities and then understand the implications of implementing any, any such limitations on the aerodrome, aviation and the, and the regional economy. I think any other aspects that have been brought up in this debate will be covered by giving council officers the opportunity to bring those, that information to us in the report that's brought to us in the, in the coming months. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor King. We'll now go to a vote, who has in favour of the motion? Ask your name, honestly. Section A, foreshadowed items, do we have any foreshadowed items, Mr. King?
This is an opportunity for councillors to advise the chamber player in tending to raise notices of motion in a future meeting.
Do we have any foreshadowed items? We do not. Okay, section F, urgent items not included in the agenda, do we have any urgent items, councillors? With the in none. Section G, to consider and order on councillor reports, who's going first today? Councillor King?
Thank you. Just a couple from me, twenty-third of the second, attended the Swan Hill Motorplex General Meeting. The next meeting's actually going to be held out there and myself and Adam Sadler, the Economic Development Manager, will be attending at the Motorplex to, to better understand that facility and the the goals of each of the individual member groups out there. And then last night, the, just a general meeting of Swan Hill Corporation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor P.
Good to meet you, I attended, Mr. Mayor, was the founding master of the Swan Hill Hospital, which was absolutely terrific to see. But I'd thank the Swan Hill Medical New Hospital Committee, the work that they've done behind the scenes to finally get the, the Liberal Government to give us eighteen million. It's all very expensive to get the eighteen million, but we brought a lot more, obviously. And then back to back, sort of on the back for a forty-eight million dollar project, of which they're only supplying eighteen. So we don't stop here. The committee is Swan Hill Medical New Hospital, not Swan Hill Medical New Emergency Department. So we will keep advocating for the future stages of Swan Hill Hospital, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor P.
On the twenty-fifth of February, I was the Central Victorian Greenhouse Alliance Board Meeting. The second of March, the Boundary Bend Progress Association Meeting. All the assemblies that I'm listed at were correct. And on the eleventh of March, a meeting at Boundary Bend and at Pyeble where Ali Kappa came to meet the community groups. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jeffrey?
I have nothing to report, Mr. Mayor, I've been good equipped, so.
Thank you.
Excellent.
I attended the BPW meeting, the guest speakers on Women's Health. I attended the Tennis Week opening social event after the cancellation, which was pretty interesting. Lots of unhappy people, sad people. Bruce was very good providing the music and cheering everybody up, so I think it ended up going out pretty good night. Also went to the seminars and the meetings during March, the Basco's event, which went all day. Now our action group meeting and the international women's starting morning too.
Thank you, councillor.
And amongst others, first of the third, Agribusiness Advisory Committee, second of the third, Residents and Ratepayers Association. Author for the Admiralty Group of Councillors in Mildura, where we were addressed by the Water Minister, Pete Pitt. And then also in the team that's with the people members and Minister of Pand, Bridgette McGinty. I went for the Zoom meeting with MRGC and dwelt in regard to the golden merit I V T trade rules, which is a pretty important development for us, they're currently being reviewed. And that's our report for me. That concludes that section, we now will go into in camera, do I need, can I have a, move the place?
Further motion, we're going to the camera.
Camera, it's sitting in the way, councillor King, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, now I'll just ask that we be seated and silent until we.